Hi, this is Dan for the Department of Public Affairs. David, Martha, thank you for this new day, a chance to gather together. We've got several items to take care of today, and we just are glad that you were here to provide us with direction and guidance, and in fact, that's what we asked for. We are incapable of knowing all the facts in any given time, and we just ask that you would impart that wisdom upon us to enable us to make the correct decisions. We pray for this county, for the people that work for the county, for those that support the county financially, and we again, or need your guidance to always do what is in the best of all parties. We just pray for our first responders. We have many here with us today. We pray for our law enforcement. We pray for our leadership statewide and nationwide. Martha, we've got tumultuous times, and we pray for the peace of God to cover over us all. We just thank you for the spring weather. Thank you that the storms are behind us, we hope. Thank you for sparing our county any further serious damage. We now turn this agenda over to you in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Lord for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for the record, this is our second regular meeting of the month, March 2021, and it's the twenty-second today, March. We'll begin with item number one. This is public comment time. If there's anyone here that has a general comment that they would like to make before or not related to agenda items, this is your opportunity to serve as speak on agenda items when we get to that. Anyone have any general comments? We'll move on then. Senator, our minutes, two weeks ago, March eight. Make it motion. Motion to approve that set of minutes. Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second Commissioner Parker, can you put some comments related to another minutes? All the way through that set of minutes, say aye. Want to go, Mr. Joyce, doing those. Item number three is a report on our code work status on Charlotte. Commissioner Ford, Kim Mark.
We've been mostly patching. We've put in a couple or three culvers, but mostly just patching, trying to get the holes and all filled up and the ice and all the damage from it. But about to get around the precinct with that, and we're gonna start doing some scavenging on some roads here probably within the next week or two if we can get the weather to.
We've been patching and trying to catch up, and we cleaned up some trees, thirty-four, forty-five, last week because of storm, the wind mostly, so we had a couple of trees we'd pick up. Other than that, we've been patching.
We went last week, we had a lot of trees down in that windstorm, got them all cleaned up, cut down, and we did some work on twenty-eight fifty, doing some potholes and scavenging on that. Also, we did eleven fifty, did some on eleven fifty-three, and generally, all around the precinct, filling potholes, and we're working on some ditching drainage on twelve forty, and some cross culverts, and some side culverts on that road.
Is it?
We finished overlay on County Road ten thirty. We've been, we scabbed County Road ten thirty-five and County Road thirteen fifty. We cleaned ditches on County Road thirteen thirty, and we've been replacing culverts and patching lots of culverts.
Did you get those, really bad spots?
We worked on that also last week. I have one spot, I'm gonna do a little bit more work on ten thirty, and should have it wrapped up, ready to scab it over so we can get ready to gypsy that. So, almost there. We did one whole, another whole day last week on it, so it's in a lot better shape now. Yes, good and firm, but so.
Item number four, Senator, possibly through volunteer fire department contract. We discussed this several meetings. We tabled it in the last meeting. While we thought we had a final product, we tabled it because we wanted to speak with the Taalco Fire Department and make whatever adjustments we felt like were needed to have a contract that suited the Taalco Fire Department. Let me take what I've learned, and I should have remembered this, but I didn't, just five years ago, back on the first day of October two thousand twenty-three, I signed law with Air of Taalco Fire Protection Services Agreement. And let me just briefly take you some of the highlights of this document and understand the somewhat different and unique relationship between the county and the city of Taalco. The city of Taalco actually provides fire services for the county, for Taalco, and for extended area beyond the city limits. So this agreement, and it was the only agreement that was entered into back at that time, while the contract was discussed with other departments, we did give this one to the date. And so, rather than making payments to a volunteer fire department as with our other departments, this is an agreement, a contract, or any one call it, with the city of Taalco who has a fire department, and with this document, their cars are pleased and provide services to the county up in that corner of the county. Anyway, this was entered into the first day of August between the city of Taalco and the county of Titus, an agreement concerning fire protection and rescue services, each acting herein and approved as duly authorized officials. Some of the major differences, first of all, are the fact that it is relatively short. It's about one page long and has five sections, whereas the other document that we are asking, we are discussing, and getting ready to ask our other departments to sign, is a much lengthier document. There are a lot of other clear, more clearly specified requirements in that document. One of the major differences financially with this agreement with Taalco that is currently a lot, well, is enforced, and that is that there is nineteen thousand two hundred dollars paid per year, and that is sixteen hundred dollars per month as compared to twelve hundred dollars per month. So there is a significant financial difference there. Eight hundred fifty dollars for training, a thousand dollars per year for fire equipment. And after visiting with Chief Carroll about this, he reminded me that the main reason for that differential in pay was the fact that the county, Titus County, does not pay for insurance for their vehicles as we do for the other entities, and we right now pay for the other departments total of about thirty-two thousand dollars. If we were to have the equipment that is owned by Taalco that's being paid for, that coverage is paid for by the city of Taalco, it would, in my opinion, be about equivalent to that four hundred dollar per month differential. The compensation here includes twelve dollars for each call responded to outside of Taalco city limits. The other items here are more general in nature. It talks about personnel as agents of the county, limitations, it talks about who's in charge on a fire, and then it's responded to by the city of Taalco Fire Department, and it clearly states that the city of Taalco Fire Chief retains and is given authority by the city to act at all times using full expression to protect and preserve equipment and personnel. So therefore, it's a little bit different as far as who's in command of the fire within Taalco's district. Final section five talks about indemnity and hold harmless, workers' compensation coverage, the city provides workers' compensation coverage for its volunteer firing. So the question here is, is this document that is in effect right now an adequate documentation, and is it a fair document between the Taalco Fire Department and Titus County? And as Chief Carroll requested, he believes that it is perfectly adequate at this time to allow this document to continue and to be representative of the relationship with the county. And it is by opinion that that document is adequate. Are there some further stipulations in the other contract with the other departments? Yes, there's quite a few more. And if and when we reach a point where we felt like we needed to have some clearer definition because we were having problems with late filings, or whatever it might be, that there was deviation by the Taalco Fire Department that was not something that was acceptable to us, that we wouldn't accept from our other fire departments, I think at that time we could say that this no longer was going to be the document that we want to use. The effective date was, again, October sixteen, and it shall remain in force and effect as to all provisions. Either party may terminate this contract in hold or in part on ninety days written notice of the same. So we could void this contract with a ninety-day notice and say, okay, we want to bring Taalco Fire Department into the same document as we have with our other volunteer fire departments. Again, we are making an agreement or a contract with the city of Taalco, not with the Taalco Fire Department. So legally, there is a difference there. I know that there's going to be some of our firefighters that don't believe that that's a fair way to do things, and that's what we're here to discuss. I'm sure there are some in the audience that would want to express their opinions that may differ, and I'm certainly open to listening to them. I'm just telling you about what I was asked to do here since the last meeting, as far as getting a contract that would be suitable with Taalco considering that different relationship. So, before we invite any comments from the public, Commissioner, do you have any questions about this? I provided you a copy of this via email. I'll be quiet for a minute, then anybody speak up here, or let anybody in the audience
I just think that this is our opportunity to get all of them, everybody, on the same page, and that we really, really ought to have all the departments together. That's my feelings of them.
Can you, Commissioner, before I ask these gentlemen in the audience that would like to?
It's been since two thousand sixteen, right? This contract had been through?
October sixteen.
Yeah. You know, like, I don't know what the insurance we pay and everything, but, you know, I don't know what is, if it equalizes out or whatever. It's been working, but like I said, it's, I've just happened to come up, so I don't really know. Like I said, it's, they got agreement regardless, so.
I can't give you a figure as to exactly what the insurance premium addition would be if we were to take in all the coverage for Taalco, but based on the fact that our other departments cost us a total of about thirty-two thousand, I am assuming that that would be, divide that up by the number of fire departments and add a point more, it would be roughly equivalent to that differential there, maybe eighty dollars. Just, I'm just speculating. I forget.
All right.
Commissioners, I'm on.
Well, since our municipality, it is kind of confusing if you do divide up your fire, volunteer firemen with the rest, the way you pay the city from the city of Taalco, I can see where it's gonna be different, so. Now just listen to the other side, whoever else got to say something, and... I don't see a problem.
Ladies and gentlemen, anyone who would like to give us your view on this before we make the decision? Chief, come on up, or we'll bring you a mic. Chief Clark was kind enough to send his well-thought-out opinions via email. Appreciate that.
You just, you can feel all the words I learned because of...
I like it that way.
Hard to see.
Thanks, sir.
Can you hear me? When we started this journey of setting up the rules and regulations of how the Titus County VFDs handled taxpayers' funding of our volunteer fire departments, there were many discussions, both from both sides, and we understand being held accountable for taxpayer funding. In fact, we have presented plans for such an agreement on two occasions, back in two thousand eleven and back in two thousand fifteen. On this current contract, you request us to use the same forms when we submit our monthly payments, our reports for payments. This is to help out Barbara and her staff and make their job a little easier, and we agree with this. We think that's fair. You request us to have the reports turned in in a timely fashion, and some penalties, knowing that most departments already adhere to this policy, and we agree with this. You request to submit a yearly income expense report so you can see a snapshot of how we spend county funding, and depending on the findings of this report, you may ask for additional information in the form of a county audit to support the report. And most of us are already doing this and turn it in yearly. And again, we agree with this. You request us to turn in training reports, and what we have trained the previous month. Report is then to be given to the Titus County Emergency Manager, and a quarterly report produced to share with all the commissioners and the judge and the public if they so desire, to see who's training on what topic. And we agree with this, training's important. You request us to test and certify our equipment, such as pumps, engine pumps, hose, SCBA, fire extinguishers, and most of us are doing this on a one- or two-year interval and sharing the results. So we agree with this. The final draft of the contract between Titus County and the VFDs is a document that most all of us adhere to on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis. We understand the need to break out the numerous bullet points on the current contract, and by doing so, and spelling out these bullet points, it gives you the chance to correct any deficiencies that you may see. The problem in this whole dealing is there's seven VFDs in Titus County. This is only applying to six. Where's the fairness in that? Also note, such items as cabin chassis replacement, hose fund replacement, and the Texas A&amp;M training funding that you currently give us each year are not on this contract. So if Judge Lee, you're to leave office, any of you commissioners leave office, Barbara leaves office, and we come up with a budget and say, okay, so-and-so is due for cabin chassis this year, and they're gonna say, where is it in the contract? What agreement is this? So we think those should be added. Taking all this in consideration, we're asking that this agenda item be tabled, and let the designated members of the contract committee go back to work and try to come up with a better plan. Thank you.
Well, while you're standing there, are you more concerned with what we may have left out of this document, or are you more concerned with what's left out of this Taalco
All we're asking for is to be fair. I mean, if you're gonna hold us, the six VFDs responsible to this document, there's one VFD that's left out of this. I mean, they have a contract, I agree with that, but they're not held to this, the same thing we are. That's all we're saying is, let's get this straight before you say, okay, you said you gotta toe the line, but number seven, you don't have to. And I don't disagree that Taalco's doing everything in this contract that we're doing. I mean, it's all there, and we're all trying to work together. But if you're gonna make us toe the line and come down on us if we have a deficiency in an area, I think it ought to be for everyone.
I appreciate that. I'd like to hear your comments on how, help me to understand, is this, is Taalco truly a volunteer fire department, or are we contracting with the municipality similar but quite different than we do with the city of Mount Pleasant?
I think it's both. They have a volunteer fire department that handles the rural district outside of their city limit, and they have a city department that handles inside the city. The city department is also, from what I understand, helping fund the department, is true?
Yes.
So, Chief McRae, I think according to the current contract, even in the Mount Pleasant contract, says that Taalco has jurisdiction in the city of Taalco. So I think they have, it's a, I don't know.
Chief Carroll, it might help, it'll help me and might help these other guys if we kind of understand what makes the relationship between the county and the city of Taalco Fire Department, and what is the volunteer fire department? Is that just another name for the city fire department when they extend beyond the boundaries of the city limit? Is this a separate group of people? Or does the city monitor how you spend the money that they give to you? It's a little bit confusing of a relationship. Could I get you to come to the mic, or we'll hand you the mic? Ready? Hold on, we're gonna give you a mic.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, the deal is, the city of Taalco gets all the funds. The fire department doesn't run the funds. Everything that's spent out of that account is through the city. You pay the city, they bill you, you pay them. It's not the fire department that runs that account. As far as our training records and stuff, we have training every month, and we keep those records, just like the city of Mount Pleasant keeps their records. So everything is taken care of. If you want to change this contract, you're not gonna change it with the fire department, you gotta change it with the city. You'll have to go to them, go to their city council and get that request made. So it's not, we're not here to battle for this contract. This is between the county and the city of Taalco, not the Taalco Fire Department. So if y'all wanna make a change, it's not through us. Us two sitting here today, we're here to answer your questions, but as far as trying to make a change, we can't tell you nothing, so, because it's between y'all and the city.
Is there a difference between the volunteer group of volunteers and the paid employees of the city of Taalco? Are there some that serve volunteer fire department that are not on the payroll of the city?
We're all, even the city employees, once we get off, when we make a call, we're volunteer. We're not on city paid. It's a volunteer service, the whole thing is. But like I said, we don't control any of the funding or anything. It's the trucks belongs to the city, the whole nine yards. When we get a call, the city employees make that call, like we go on that.
We go off city clock.
Yeah, we go off city clock, on the volunteer service.
But yet you use equipment that is provided for you by the city that you don't own as an apartment?
No, fire department doesn't own that equipment, the city owns that equipment.
And you utilize your skills and training that are paid for and provided by the city of Taalco?
Yes, that's correct. Anytime we spend money out of our account, we have to go to them to get approval to spend that money. If we buy a truck, we have to go through them to do that. We spent three thousand on an engine, and we had to go to the city to get that approved to get that paid through our funding. So they control the funding, not us. That's the difference between us and the county departments. The county departments, they control their own funding. They spend their money within their services, whatever they need. We don't have that luxury. We gotta go before the city to get everything approved.
I think you draw a lot of, I don't think anybody's wrong here. Again, my personal feeling is we have an agreement in place. We are getting cooperation out of the Taalco department. I believe there are effective controls in place that take the place of some of the controls we are implementing in ours, and at this point, you know, if something's not broken, I don't feel like it needs to be fixed. If we want to have some conversation with the department and say, hey, would you mind using the correct forms, and hopefully we would get cooperation. If there's anything, in other words, that would enhance our auditor's ability to do her job of reporting that's provided, I believe that we should ask for that voluntarily, and if that doesn't occur, then again, we can also say, okay, we're gonna void this contract, and we're gonna supply you with a new agreement. And again, that will be something that we'll negotiate with the mayor and the council rather than the volunteer fire department. So if we were having any issues with the Taalco Fire Department, I'm not aware of any, I would say this would be a good time to do that, but my feeling is I'm gonna honor this existing contract, because it's the only one that exists right now until we need it to be done different. Now, do I have a problem with adding in any additional verbiage to our current contract to get it shored up as far as placing the vehicles and training monies? So you've got, I think, a decision today is one to be on with the existing Taalco agreement. Do we void that with ninety days' notice and say, whatever we did with the rest of the fixed departments, we're going to ask of you? And then you want to table our decision on approval of the documents that we're asking the other six departments to sign because we need to add some specific items in there to make it complete. That's another decision. That would, in which case, I would say, table that other agreement, but again, you could make a decision today on how to deal with the Taalco Fire Protection Services Agreement. If you decide that that's no longer suitable, then you need to make a motion to void that with ninety days' notice.
So Taalco's good like it stands. We don't have to change anything on it, do we?
That's one option, I'm not saying...
We just have to make a motion if we need to change anything.
That's a different opinion on that.
Yeah. Well, I'd feel, I'd feel good with leaving Taalco the way it is and approving the contract for the volunteers as we... as we've drawn it up.
Your motion is, is that you believe you have a good line of documents for the volunteer fire departments that would apply to the six other volunteer fire departments? And you believe that the existing agreement with Taalco is satisfactory? No further changes needed to either?
Yes.
That's Commissioner Applewhite's motion.
Second.
That's second by Commissioner Applewhite. Discussion. Wouldn't take but one other meeting. It sounds like, I don't understand what you're saying. I have no problem waiting another two weeks to the next meeting to make some additions to the document we've been working on for the last several weeks. Anyway, have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, call us in favor of approval of this motion. Say aye.
Aye.
I had an aye and an aye, but I didn't, an aye?
Nope.
And then, okay, I have a three to one there. So that passes. I would like to say that I hope that this, this court will remember that we do have some things that are not documented necessarily other than historically showing what our practices have been on providing monies for certain things and providing vehicles on a rotational basis. And it sounds like you're okay with not documenting that. I'm okay with not documenting that. I certainly hope that you all will continue that tradition. I think that that's a fair thing to do, but I have a reason not to do it. So, thank you for everyone who showed up today. I appreciate your input. I understand the differing opinions on each of these. That's the decision of the board today. Thank you. You're all welcome to stick around. Item number five, discuss a professional services agreement for a licensed court interpreter services with possible action. We have talked about this at multiple meetings in the past. We still have the professional services agreement that has been executed for a court interpreter. And while we've had limited activity across the street where the court interpreter is primarily used, we need to have some kind of documented agreement with whoever is going to provide our interpreter services. And as you'll recall, we had, I think the court made their opinions known previously as far as continuing on with what was previously our court interpreter. I'm bringing you today some more discussion on an alternative. And that is the 19th second entity that submitted interest in providing court interpretation services for us. And let me give you some more information on that. And this was a lady by the name of Norma Meeks. Norma's not here with us, I assume. Norma recently had surgery and she was out. And was, I was unable to converse, but they're there for a while. But I believe she is doing better. And we last spoke on Thursday about some of the details in this document. And this document was prepared by John Coburn. It was modified to meet the proposal that Ms. Meeks, who does business as... I can't remember what the actual name of her business is. We use that name, but for right now, it's just reflected as Norma Meeks. She is the owner of the company and she has several, I'm going to say several, I want to say, I think it's like three interpreters that work for her. And I presented this document to her several weeks ago. Again, she was out for surgery and was unable to give us the time that it needed. But since that time, she has talked with her staff, her sub-employees that work for her to provide interpreting services. So she's the primary scheduler. She's also one of the interpreters that she has these folks working for. So they can be in multiple places at any one time. And what she told me, the primary difference I want you to know about is, and she really didn't have a lot of significant changes here, but she said, you know what? Brian, as I've talked to my employees and we look at where Titus County is and Mount Pleasant and where we live, we are, we all live pretty close to one another and we are a full hour and a half away from your courthouse. And I will honor my proposal until the end of your fiscal year, which would be September 30th. But beyond that, I'm going to have to ask for a significant change. I'll keep my hourly rate the same. Then I'm going to be asked to be paid that same hourly rate for our travel time. So that adds about three hours each day that one of these interpreters comes up, whether it's a two-hour day or a minimum payday or whether it's a full day. You've got about $285 based on their $95 per hour rate that would be added to that. She is willing to provide the workers' comp insurance. She's got a reasonable cancellation policy, I believe, of 72 hours that we would need to give them notice before, before we could, before we would not expect to have to pay them for something that we scheduled. So assuming we're doing what we need to do and if the court gets scheduled or we see that there's no need for an interpreter, perhaps for 72 hours. So the main thing, I believe if we can work out the contract based on the proposal that she gave us, but understand that at the end of the fiscal year, she will want to be paid additional travel time, roughly three hours. But other than that, they are ready and willing to begin with Titus County and are happy to have this opportunity. Very pleasant person, seems very knowledgeable. Says all of her interpreters are equally capable. And they would like to take part in Titus County.
So we need to make a, a motion to contract her to Octo- October 1st? And then get a new contract for a year? Going to be like a six month?
I think that we can probably work in that, that language there.
So we can have increases after October?
That's correct.
Okay.
Correct. And of course, beyond that, you know, anybody can say, I want to change to the, with proper notice. They can notify if they want to make a change. But really, just, they're really the only ones that are close enough to us and have the capabilities to meet the flexibility and the timeframe needs that we have. Again, unless you're uncomfortable with that additional travel time, I believe this would be a good company to work with.
Make a motion, we work with these people?
How about we, how about we say the motion is what, that we, if John Coburn and myself and Ms. Meeks to work out a final version of this contract? And then you leave it up to us to execute it once that's done? Or would you like to see that final contract before we approve it? I'm happy to do that.
No, whatever we approve, it'd be good enough for me.
So you're okay with the adjustment to the, come October 1st?
Mm.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Applewhite to authorize John Coburn and myself to work out a final draft and a final copy for signature on behalf of both parties with the understanding that there will be an adjustment to travel pay at the standard $95 an hour rate as starting this October 1st.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parkman. Any further discussion?
But that still gives us, if we decide to go a different route, October 1st, we can do a different route, right?
Let me find what the agreement here is. Probably 90 days, so it is.
Probably.
This agreement is effective beginning when signed by both the service provider and the Titus County Commissioners Board and expiring on December 31st, 2021. That's, that's one thing that we would have to change. Except that in the case of default by the service provider, by failure to meet the conditions. So it basically gives us some reasons for cause to terminate. We could end this, and maybe that's a better way to go, September 30th. That gives us a chance to evaluate the services and, if they, unless this thing is renewed, and if we renew it, we'll make that decision there closer to October 1st. So why don't we do that?
That's fine. That's what I wanted to do.
Well, we will draft a document that expires September 30th with our full knowledge that the rates will go up if we want to continue. And that gives us some flexibility in evaluating their services in which case we might not want to continue. So you, you okay with that change? Got a motion? Commissioner Applewhite, Second Commissioner Parkman. Further discussion or questions? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number six, discuss repairs and enhancements to the Justice Center with possible action. What's going on over there? I, I want to commend our constables and our JPs and even our court and assistants they provide. And it's been a difficult four weeks. It's been a very difficult four weeks having to legally move your office to a place that you're not used to and handle the incredible number of details from telephone service to internet service to moving filing cabinets to desks and telephones and voicemails, on and on and on and on. It has been a real chore for these ladies and gentlemen. So, thank you. I'm glad we even had empty spaces for you. And while we may wish that we could have gotten on that project a little sooner and the insurance company may have wished we had, we didn't know where to put you. We couldn't put you out in the parking lot or ask you to move your car. So I think all things considered, y'all moved quite quickly. And so we have, I believe, an obligation to these four departments to get them back in best possible working conditions as quickly as we possibly can. Now, we still have certain county restrictions following bidding of work. Nonetheless, I think our primary objective is to support them while they're out of sorts and to get them back in their offices as quickly as possible. We did have, I did have a discussion along with Judge Aghan on Friday morning with Glenn Cowherd. And we did provide Glenn with a copy of the floor plan. We don't have any detailed documents showing all the elevations inside and outside of that building. At least we have a starting point, which is a drawing of the floor plan. And what I'm going to ask you to consider today is to hire Glenn Cowherd, who is an instructional engineer, to work for Prefort for an entity called Prefort... What's it called?
Prefort Design, isn't it?
No, it's a...
I can't remember.
Prefort Complex.
Prefort Complex.
Complex Designs, yeah.
And if you'll recall, Glenn provided us some services when we did a major rebuild of our north courthouse steps. He put together a good technical drawings and a bid package that enabled us to go out to bid with a comprehensive set of plans that any good contractor could look at and know exactly what was expected. That's what we need here. There's nobody in this court, there's nobody in the JPs or consulate offices that has the expertise to navigate a job like this. And I think that Glenn and his staff could, and he agrees that he could and would be willing to oversee the, one, figure out exactly what needs to be done over there. We know what needs to be done as far as just the repairs. And the repairs were, not the repairs completed. The tear-out has been completed. Did they do their air test, do you know?
No, they, I've been waiting on a couple of days. They didn't hear anything. They, I've got the cause of this project back there. Yeah, in terms of what over there, it's still, everything's still with the paint, with the air purifier. So at this time, I have no idea on that. Hopefully, I'll get somebody there when we get through here.
So what has been done so far is the sheet rock in question that was determined to be tainted or possibly had, well, the sheet rock has been removed. The insulation that got wet has been removed. Obviously, the carpeting, carpeting had already been removed. We were very fortunate that they did not have to demolish our cabinet work over there, which would have been a real expensive mess and difficult to reproduce. And since they completed that work on Thursday or Friday?
My understanding was that it was completed Friday. I'm not sure that the air test would be status. My air rock test and several other, you know, so, but then we get, I'm not sure where we're at with that.
In that truth. Okay, so you haven't heard from them this morning? But the physical tear-out has already occurred. The drying out process is going on. And so at some point, in order to make sure they've adequately gotten everything out of there that was tainted, they'll do this air test. And that will tell them, okay, our work is done as a remediation company. We'll now turn it over to the county to begin the rebuild or to put the sheet rock and the insulation back and the floor coverings, et cetera. Then we, I still believe now is a good time to make some enhancements to that building while we have everybody out of that building because the things I'm talking about, I think would have been, would be very disruptive if we were business as usual over there. And the things that Steve and I have discussed and that Glenn agrees with is we need to do an analysis of the insulation of that building specifically in the roof and see if it is adequate or what exactly needs to be done so that we get better heat and air conditioning in that building so that the HVAC systems work to the best of their ability. If they need to be upgraded or enlarged or changed, if the duct work needs to be changed. We don't have, even have any AC and heat duct work going into Ray's and Chris's office. That's one thing we've got to do. They've got the wind in the tri mound that they use. I don't know why, but we're not ducted initially. But we know that there's some changes that need to be made there. We've got decisions such as, do we want to go back to carpet? Do we want to go back with tile? Do we want to change out these same ceiling tiles that, you know, humidity bode them? Change those out and maybe change the lighting in the ceiling? Go to something more modern, the way of LED? And then consider any cabinetry adjustments that we want to make specifically in Steve's office to get him a set of working file cabinets like Judge Dunn has in her office. And again, those things have yet to be discussed in detail. But with Glenn's help, Glenn could do a technical analysis of what needs to be done from an engineering standpoint. He could put together a specific set of plans for the scope of the project that would be bid ready. And then we could take his guidance and lead as to whether we hire a... bid ready, and then we could take his guidance and lead as to whether we hire a construction manager, whether we hire a general contractor, whether we attempt to hire subcontractors ourselves. I believe and Lynn believes that Prefort Complex Designs fee would be well under our $50,000 threshold. They would not be the ones actually doing the work, but they're providing the expertise to put together a set of plans that can be bid. So that's my suggestion, and that we do this today and not delay, that we get Lynn working on this as quickly as possible, because the longer we delay it, the longer we delay them getting back in there. Any of you want to bow on what I've had to say? You've got a good mic there, you can sit there if you want.
The, we understand that there's the legal issues we have to, the court has to follow as far as any kind of bid process or anything.
Is that right? Be sure that mic's on.
But we are asking that this is an urgent matter for one reason mainly is that we're in two separate places, and it, the convenience to the public, ones that are having to pay fines or ones having to file claims. There, for instance, example, elderly couple came out to come up to file a claim to my office, and they came up the stairs, and we had to tell them it was across the street in Judge Dunn's office. And the inconvenience of them, you could see the frustration, you know, with them having to go to two different spots and sit in this room. And, you know, the, quickly, safely, and properly to get in is there for us what we need.
Yeah, we really care for many, you know, changes in the building. We just want to be able to go back and work, you know, and being able to be there for the public, because he said it's not only two places, it's actually three places, because they go to the Justice Center, and that they get confused, which office am I supposed to be? Four houses. Go upstairs. Oh, it's not here. And people is really frustrated. Getting, and then in the building that I am in, you know, and it's smaller, we're the first door, and I believe it's an inconvenience for probation office that we are there because of the flow of people, you know, they're coming to our office to either make payments or having kids come into the office. It's like if they are having court, I cannot schedule any kids, you know, to come with the, the parents, you know, for citations. We have to wait, because I don't want to have kids waiting, you know, when they are having a lot of people coming to their building. And like I said, people, some people are getting really, really frustrated. They get upset when they come to the office. I know it's not your fault, it was an accident what happened, but we would really like to go back to our building as soon as possible.
Well, Barbara, I know this court supports you on that. Is there anything in what I had to say that you think is unnecessary, or is that kind of, are you kind of in agreement with that?
I would like for us to have tile instead of carpet, because if an incident like this happened again, they will have to rip the carpet. If they put tile, it's going to be there forever. You know, it's going to take many, many more years, you know, wearing and staying there, so it's going to last longer. Commissioner Fitch, you know, offer some new, yes, you know, making the building look like the adult probation, but if that is going to take time, then we don't really need that.
It's not going to be feasible with those metal doors, so we're going to just kind of put it back like it was and make it nice.
Just kind of put it back just like it was, we don't need any add-ins, you know, just the way it is, or the way we can go back and work.
Quick as we can.
Because those offices have been working, you know, either office, you know, with what we have now for many years. So we don't really need any changes.
All right, sounds good.
My office didn't get flooded over there from the pipe bursting, but I noticed when we moved our furniture out of there, and that was new carpet about five years ago, and furniture was put in right on top of it and has never been moved, but it looked like all up underneath my desk was black mold. I don't know if somehow that may be coming up through the concrete or something and getting moisture or what it was, but it, it looked like black mold.
It's from the air conditioning being on after that flooded. It gets everywhere, so that's what those air tests are.
It was just under my desk, but I mean, there'd be no reason for it to be like that because it's never been moved.
Yeah.
So that'd be another good reason to probably go.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And other than the enhancements that, that were requested from my office, filing spaces to add what, for the cabinets and the working cabinets and everything, we're running out of places to put our files and stuff. It lots of stuff in the open areas like, like you suggested or said, you know, make it, give some filing systems like Judge Dunn has, that's all we can.
Yeah, I like that.
Well, if we all understand, or we need to understand, anything we do beyond what the insurance company pays for, gives monies that we don't have budgeting for that office over there, so we're going to have to figure out a way to keep those expenses at a reasonable level. But again, if it's a long-term capital investment to improve, that's, my personally believe it's worth it if we can do it.
Are you looking to replace the air conditioning system?
I hope, I hope not. I hope it's an insulation problem that can be fixed with...
They've been on their, almost on a weekly. For years. They've never been fixed.
For years, yeah, we dealt with that. I mean, we've tried insulating the top of the ceiling tiles, we tried putting vents in the end of the buildings. I, I don't know, I'm not an expert, I don't know what the problem is. That's why we need an expert. And in fact, I think we are required, as Lynn showed us on that flow chart, we are required with the amount of work that we're doing to that building to get an engineer involved. And that'll be for them to tell us, is it too, too, too little tonnage? Is it too little insulation? Is it a combination of both? I don't know. Any other comments? Any questions, any questions, comments, motions?
So we need to make a motion to hire Prefort Complex Designs to, to, I like their, I like his plan. I like the way they organize and get things going as quick as we can.
Hey, one other thing I thought about is on the backside of the building, the west side, where the steps go down, the concrete is separating without that far from the, from the wall, I guess what you call it. I mean, if it's separation of that, I don't know why, I don't know if it's just ground's giving way over there or what, it's a, I don't know if anybody's noticed that, but it's a pretty big, pretty big force that not be moved, looked at.
It's going to be far so we can get in the building.
Well, why don't we save the details as far as redo that building beyond the repairs for a later discussion? And let's get started by hiring some professional help to do two things, get our building put back together the way it was, and then suggest appropriate capital improvements to that building while nobody's in there to be determined at a later time.
Make a motion we hire Prefort Complex Designs to get started with engineering and the guidance on this remodel.
And to put together a scope of work and a bid package. Motion is to hire Prefort Complex Designs to determine a scope of work and develop a set of plans that are ready to be put out for bid.
Just a second.
Had the motion, had the second Commissioner Parkman. Any others? Guys, if you all have some additional ideas or think we ought to do it a different way, then I appreciate your help. All right, all in favor say aye. Thank you.
As soon as I hear where we can actually enter the building.
Yeah, let us have, I want to think we'd all like to see what it looks like.
All right.
Item number seven, consider it possibly approved adding workers' comp coverage for up to ten volunteers. Barbara mentioned this to me several weeks ago, and I've been procrastinating, but this is a fairly simple decision, I believe. I've got a document here from Texas Association of Counties that carries our coverage, and this is from Yolanda and Member Services. Barbara, she says, for ten volunteers under volunteer dash all others, the annual contribution would be $330. If you have any questions or decide to go forward, let me know. Because I understand that this would cover not volun, don't confuse this with volunteer fire department like I did. These are volunteers that might be working for the county, and you were telling me that it's the JPs offices that we're thinking about using.
It's the district clerk's office.
District clerk's office.
Yep.
You're guilty, okay. So Marcus might like to utilize some volunteers built over there, and I don't think we want anybody, whether they're paid or not paid, working for the county in county facilities that are not covered for an on-the-job action. And for $330 to have that peace of mind, it's no fault coverage, it just pays their medical expenses and whatever else workers' comp pays, and as we know, it would be quite extensive under, you know, a bad situation. So I would suggest that we...
How does that work? Do you just give, call and give you a name if you're going to have a volunteer help you one day ahead of time, and then it cancels and that policy's good for somebody else at another time or per person?
I'm sorry, the policy will be in place for the county as a whole, and when you have a volunteer, there'll be a little form that you sign that says this person's going to volunteer. I would suggest that, you know, if you know it's going to be for a period of time, you say, you know, April 1st or June 30th or something like that. This will cover up to 10.
Okay.
The other thing I think that's important about this is I think it's important long term for us to look for people who want to work in the county, and it might give an opportunity for you, try out a, a young man who might be a road hand, or try out somebody who wants to work in the district clerk's office or the county clerk, those kinds of options. But that's strictly up to each individual.
And if we get to a point where we've got, I don't see us taking on more than 10 at a time, as long as we have under 10 at a time, it's not that we have to report a name each time one clock's, clock's in, the clock's out.
No. We just need to know.
Just need to know. Actually, we're coming handy.
Make a motion.
Motion to add volunteer coverage to corrupt 10 volunteers, that annual cost of $330 is a motion by Commissioner Parker.
No, Commissioner Appleby. He, he made the motion, I'll second it though.
Boy, y'all are just sounding just alike.
No respect. I'll watch, second my motion, Commissioner Parker. All in favor say aye.
Ah.
Item number eight, consider possibly approved purchase of a new mold grater blade for Precinct Three, it's going to cost shipping $7,325. This is a proposal from Weller Tractor South Beach, $7,000 for what they call a mold board. You can give us the technicals here in a second. $325 trade, three to four weeks to build. What do we need to know about this?
This is, we tried looking for a blade through the Caterpillar and all the others that we have to have a grater because our, our mold inside, we, we've patched it, and every time now we put a patch on it, it'll blow a hole, it's so thin. Well, that dirt and gravel's come up and rubbed it off and made it real thin metal. But we tried to find used ones, but there's none out there. We tried, we went through CAT, they don't, it's a 14-foot blade, and they recommended us, these people here, about building a whole blade for us. It's the whole, the blade and everything rebuilt.
This is new or is it rebuilt?
No, it's a new one. They built, they built it, they're going to build it.
This is what I call a scraper.
Yes, sir, that's, it's a blade, yes, yes, it is.
14 feet long.
Yes, sir. And it, like I said, without it, we're going to, either that or we're going to buy another maintainer. And I think this is a...
Make sure maintainer works.
Yes.
Comes to count that.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Questions, comments on this? Is that reasonable, everybody?
Make a motion we approve.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Parkman.
Second.
Commissioner Finchall, all in favor say aye.
Ah.
Along that same line of equipment, we'll turn to item number nine, consider possibly approved the purchase of a 2014, how do you pronounce that?
We call it Bruce for some reason, I don't know. You asking like, want a Bruce broom? Yes.
Broom for Precinct Three, that is some kind of broom.
Yeah, it's probably about 70, $80,000 new, so the used one's the way to go. The other one we have that we share is about, it's the same model, and we like that brand. I've been looking for one for about a year. They usually run 23,000 is the, as cheap as I've found them. Average is about 26,000 to 32,000. This one has 880 hours on it, so they're getting it ready, getting it through a rental company out of Longview.
United Rentals?
United, yeah, United Rentals. I've looked at several of them. This one, they're going to put a new broom on it and PM it and, you know, change the oil and everything, make sure everything's working on it. And it should get to look at this week. Yes, this is a little vehicle with a cab, air conditioning, keeps the dirt and debris from blowing on you. And what we use it for, this is not a vehicle like the city or Tex- dot uses to vacuum and clean roads, it's simply a broom that sweeps the road off, it cleans off the debris before we scab the roads, before we patch. When we're working on base failures, we will blade them, we'll broom it off so all our materials stick and adhere better. We also use it during chip sealing. And so last year, our main broom broke down, and we borrowed one from the city, thankfully, so we could keep going. So it'll be a good backup anywhere in the county. Plus, you also do some cleanup, get calls when there's glass in the road and spills of all kinds of road materials. People have a leak on their truck or something and spill gravel for a mile or two. Instead of just sweeping it by hand, you can get on that broom and knock it on out. When we clean ditches, we get the dirt and the crud off the road so you're not driving through all the mud and the nastiness. So it's just a real handy piece of equipment for road work. And I should get a call this week. They brought it to Longview to service it. When they call and it's ready, I'm going to take Jeff Cates with me, and we're going to look it over really good and maybe try to do a little bit more negotiating. I don't know how firm they are on this price, and plan on purchasing it.
Does this replace an old worn outlet, or is this...
Uh, we did have a broom years ago, and they sold it in an auction. What I'm, several people probably had brooms at one time. I know Precinct One had a broom at one time, because it's pretty common for road work, so.
We've got one.
We, we share, yeah, we share one broom for the whole county, so.
But it's, it...
And so most time, it's pretty easy to share, and I don't have no problem with it, but for convenience and time, it would be really nice to have, have it. And so we, I've got that in my capital outlay.
Is that a recommendation and a motion from you then?
Yeah, make a motion to purchase it.
Motion made by Commissioner Finchall.
Second.
Assuming the license...
Works out, yeah.
...piece, costing $23,000 or less, got a second, Commissioner Parker. Questions, comments, all in favor say aye.
Ah.
Item number 10, I'm sure you put this on here, discuss purchase of uniforms for road departments and maintenance department with possible action. We'll just talk about that.
I'd say this is a joint effort by county road department, maintenance department, commissioners. It was brought up years ago before I came in office, and since I've been in office, I feel a need for it. Just, I try to make my own uniforms. I buy stickers and put on my T-shirts that I replace two or three times a year, and as far as clothes, just trying to find something clean enough to go to work in. far as clothes, just trying to find something clean enough to go to work in. Going in public, representing the county, I think it's professional to have a uniform on, especially when we go and buy things at retail establishments, they're wondering who you are, what you're doing, what you're doing out in their front yard digging in their ditch, and as far as cost of replacing clothes and stains and things, I think it would be a, it would be a blessing to have some uniforms that you, that somebody else wearing, tear on them, and wash them, and clean them, and then I don't have any tar stains in my dryer getting all over my other clothes when we wash. I'm sure y'all have had that problem before, and it does happen. So we've talked with a uniform company service that will provide shirts with our logo from Titus County on it. We also would like a choice of blue jeans, they have a comfort fit and they have a carpenter fit jean. We feel like the jeans are, in the road department, are more safe as far as hot stuff spraying on you, welding, cutting, scraping versus the khaki type material, the cotton material that's thinner. So we prefer a jean. Also gonna get a jacket, that's just kind of a lightweight jacket like this. You actually get two of them, you have one that you're using, one that's being cleaned at all times. You'll have a set that's at the washer, at the cleaners, getting cleaned with the uniform company. You'll have a set of clothes that you're gonna have at the house. We'll have one set of extra we can carry in our vehicle or leave it at our shop in case we change clothes, which happens a lot, you have to go home, change, or bring something to change into sometimes. Stuff sprays all over us and we get into everything all day long. Also, we'll have a bin, we want a bin. They'll supply a bin that will be at our maintenance barn. We turn in all our clothing on Thursdays, they pick it up on Friday, and they leave our new ones on Friday, and we'll pick those up Monday morning or Friday evening late and bring them back to our precinct barns. So I thought the pricing was real reasonable, it's easy to replace. We have special, this is the uniform people here, I'll have y'all come up, we have a special government pricing and replacement and all kind of things like that, it's kind of a good benefit for being a government entity. And I, if y'all wanna, anybody else say anything? You wanna come up, the uniform representative, come up and talk to us about what y'all--
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Tori Boesler, this is David Cooper of--
Tori, we can hear you fine, but there's people that'll watch us on our YouTube channel, and that's what that mic's for, to go down and hear what you're saying.
We're really just here to answer any questions that you have. Mr. Cates reached out to us and asked us for a, remember the Byboard, so there is special government pricing for the uniforms. Probably run for the eleven sets of clothes and a jacket, I think it's probably about seven dollars a week per guy in uniform. As Mr. Fitch was telling you, there are five clean sets in their possession, one set on their body and five being cleaned, so we issue eleven sets to each person in uniform. And then, of course, jackets, so that when a jacket's dirty, you can turn one in and still have one clean. Again, the pricing is so good, because your members are Byboard, it's much less expensive for you guys than just a normal business that might be looking into uniforms. So it does present an image for your county, like he was saying, when you are out, it's recognizable and not just, you know, a person in a T-shirt and jeans that a person may not know who they're with, give a little more validity to the person that's on site and bring the other person a feeling of safety, seeing that somebody is identified. You can have their name as well as the county logo on the garments. We looked at standard work shirts and, like you were saying, two different types of blue jeans. We do have a work pant, we do know more strong for what you do, but there is a pant option.
What was the company name? I missed that.
Up on the Universe.
Universe, okay. Do we have any proposals yet, or are we gonna just live at today's decision to, in theory, move forward with this and get a firm--
We got the pricing. Do we have to have a total number of employees for a proposal? It just goes by that pricing times sixteen, eighteen. I have the pricing, thought Jeff was coming today with it and--
Was it like twenty-two of us with that proposal?
Yeah, we're gonna also do, offer it to our custodial staff for our buildings here, courthouse annex.
So it'd be your maintenance--
And the two maintenance mechanics, they, they, they will, they won't in on it too, so they need it as well as anybody.
Well, tell us about the cost, 'cause I don't know about--
Um, I did not bring the list. Jeff has a voter in his office, and I was up there and just run off and left. He was coming, he didn't come.
It's sort, we have a list of basically every product that we have has a special price for people who are members of Byboard. What we sent to Jeff was specifically the price of the pants and the price of the shirts and the price of the jackets. And again, I think it came out with the pants and shirts, it was like six dollars and twenty-seven cents a week, and then--
Per, per piece or what?
Per person.
Per person.
The six, twenty, seven--
That maintains their eleven sets?
Gets eleven sets of clothes that we maintain, we wash, we repair, normal wear and tear, we replace the garments. If a garment is destroyed, then there is a replacement charge, but you guys have special replacement pricing as well. So we did not put together a formal proposal with the exact number of people, because Jeff wasn't sure how many, so we just kind of gave him a permeate, and that was about all that we discussed, because he wanted this to happen before we all went through.
The initial cost to outfit one guy with these eleven sets of clothes for us, I assume we buy the stuff and you maintain it?
Actually, because your members are Byboard, there is no upfront cost. We will produce the emblems with the logo and names, we will have those stitched to the shirts. We will have varmint identification tags in the back of the garments, and then we will deliver those after we've facilitated all of that, but there's actually no upfront cost.
And then replacement cost is?
Varies per garment.
I think our shirt was like sixteen, sixteen dollars for the shirt. The blue jeans were about nineteen. The jacket was thirty, maybe. Real reasonable, I mean, if you have to replace. We're also gonna wanna change our, we wanna change the employee handbook that if an employee leaves and they do not turn in all their uniforms, whatever, we're out the county, we're gonna take it out, hold their check, and take it out of their last check. I think that would be a problem that could happen, and we can solve it like that.
You know, we set this for every Byboard, and it's really for the gentleman, and we just appreciate the opportunity--
Were y'all out of Longview? Okay. I don't mind y'all approving it in theory, I'd kind of like to know what, what the weekly cost's gonna be here. I mean, I could kind of do some rough math if I did--
I need to add up per person, and I'm not su-- yeah, because I think a couple of people will have the slacks instead of the blue jeans, and just for, in custodial work or something, ma-- building maintenance, so.
I don't have a third--
We need to get some prices together, yeah.
Let's get a vote that approves moving forward with getting a final quote, and then I'd like the public to know what that final quote is before we approve that, but if there's not enough support here to do this, let's not waste anybody.
That's right, we need to know if we can carry it forward. Make a motion to go forward, yeah, go ahead.
Can we put our votes open as well?
Okay, we also had talked about doing a stipend for the road employees, mechanics for footwear a year, something like a hundred dollars a year stipend. Put a cap on it, you know, a hundred dollars, bring us a receipt when you buy boots. Most of us go through several pairs of shoes a year, so that's, that's also, it could be separate too, the footwear versus the actual clothing, uniform, so that is another--
Approve that, and anything else you think of when we talk about--
Okay, alright. Just one big motion to move forward with Universe?
Well, move forward with getting a--
Prices?
Final quote from them based on information that you give.
Okay.
And then we can vote on that.
The only thing that I'll need from you, Mr. Fitch, is the number of people, what each person is wearing, and then I can keep with exactly--
Okay, alright, we can do that pretty quick.
I was just hate to mention the few mats here and there.
Yeah, we rule the mats out. We, we do our own mat thing, so.
And then we also, just so you know, we have a shop towels, we can bring, deliver, wash, return, clean. I think for you guys, it's seven cents a towel, and that covers the towel and cleaning, so if there's a need for that.
Okay, we didn't discuss that with the shop towels, so.
Are we gonna pay for this out of each of our budgets? Is that how we're gonna?
I would think so, to take it out of our, each precinct budget for their employees, and maintenance out of maintenance is fun, and so custodial out of courthouse, fun, what I would think.
We'll save that for the final vote--
Okay.
--for today, to, with court approval indicating your desire to move forward with this, then we'll get further pricing based on actual needs and an upcoming meeting.
Okay, make that motion.
Second.
Make a motion, Fitch, second, Parchman. Questions, comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, thank you, thank y'all for taking your time coming up today.
Thanks for being last in line.
Thank y'all very much, appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, discuss veteran service office position with possible action to follow. Just as a reminder, subsequent to when we can at this time of not having a veteran service officer, sir, I brought to you all a proposal, last call about teaming up with Camp County to utilize the services of their veteran service officer, Melissa Loren. At that time, we voted that down. As I expected to happen, and as we all know this happened, we have continued to send people down to Camp County. When we're unable to help them, that naturally becomes a suggestion, and it's difficult not to do that when somebody's in need of help. I continue to believe that it's unfair for us to send our folks down to Camp County and reload on them, because they do have a, not a full-time, they have a part-time officer there that works about two days a week at this. So I asked the county judge, Judge Mason, if they would still consider us if we wanted to revisit that, and he spoke with his veteran service officer, and yes, they do continue to help some of our veterans, but they would still be interested in a formal shared arrangement with them. I don't have those dollar figures again, but I believe it was eight thousand a year, eight thousand dollars a year, and that would be a flat fee that we would pay to Camp County, and that would give us the ability to declare conscience, send anyone that came to us for veteran service officer help, send them to see Melissa in Camp County, and this would enable Camp County to raise her pay based on more workload, and also to compensate Camp County for the fact that they are providing all the payroll taxes and insurance and office work for their veteran service officer that we can use. So I think we need to do this, I don't think it's fair to continue, and I don't think it's fair to, however many we have, to just say to our vendors, sorry, we can't help you.
I agree. We've seen there is a pretty good need in the county for this, and she's increasing monthly and staying pretty busy. We're getting a lot more calls, so I make a motion that we go with Camp County as part-time for a veteran's service officer and work in agreement with them.
Are we anytime gonna replace that job, anytime are we gonna replace that for anybody ourselves? Weller County? Are we, no, it's a--
See any need to?
If, do we need to? Is there a need?
I'm suggesting this is a very--
Right, I understand.
We don't have an employee on--
Right, exactly.
--on the calls, we're not paying payroll taxes, we're not paying benefits, and on and on and on. We're finding a room for them. I think based on our volume, this isn't appropriate.
Oh, yeah.
To do it, even with a part-time veteran service officer, you're giving quite a bit more money than this, having somebody just here, you know, a few hours for a unit a week. So I think, and she does a good job, it's--
Oh, yeah, yeah, she's, I've talked to her.
This is an outstanding person from what I've been told, so I think this is a great opportunity--
Right.
--for us, and helps out Cas County, and it helps out Melissa.
I second it.
I have a motion, and a second, to re-enter negotiation and determination of a relationship with Camp County veteran service officer at a price of approximately eight thousand dollars to be approved at a future commission or court meeting. Make a motion, and--
Second.
Fitch, Applewhite. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number twelve, approve oral and written reports of county officials. Have that provided for. I'm Barbara Freeman.
Make a motion, we approve a report?
Second.
Motion of Commissioner Fitch, the second, Commissioner Parchman to approve these reports that Barbara provided, all in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Item thirteen, is our treasurer's report that Cheryl has provided.
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Motion by Applewhite, second by Fitch. Questions, comments, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
If I can get your signature there. If we did have a few budget amendments. Don't wait till everybody signs, and then I'll go over-- Okay, let's begin with budget amendment twenty twenty-one dash eighteen. This budget amendment is designed to account for the decisions that we made last meeting the increased cost for that security software with net data, as well as three hundred dollars additional to the electronics contract over prior years. So that brings that total of four thousand eighty-five dollars. This will be taken out of contingency, that leaves a remaining contingency balance of two hundred fifty thousand nine hundred fifteen, so that's four thousand eighty-five dollars in that cover of the additional cost. So, that's four thousand eighty-five dollars in that cover of the additional cost of extending this contract for the new year at thirty-seven eighty-five, and that's a four oh eight five total adjustment. That is new money coming out of contingency. Next amendment is twenty-one one dash nineteen. This relates to precinct four, road bridge funds are special revenue funds designed for road improvements within each precinct. The external audit each year revised the amount of available fund balance that was not expended in the previous year that can be expended during the current or subsequent year. This request is to allow the rental of a wheel excavator for two months. The amount available for the audit report for precinct four was just over three hundred fifty thousand of this amount. One hundred thirty-three thousand has been accessed with budget amendment number seventeen. And with the approval of this budget amendment, which is eleven thousand two nineteen for the rental of that piece of equipment, that ships away, it is available monies and he still has two hundred six thousand remaining left. Amendment number twenty, this relates to precinct three. This is to move funds from road oil budget to repairs into capital outlay. The capital outlay item, uh, already had available funds of thirty-nine hundred ten dollars. Therefore, this increases the difference between the seventy-three twenty-five we approved earlier for that plane and the available funds amount. Commissioner Applewhite has also requested an increase to the general repairs. The net impact of this item is zero, so that's a road allocation from his, or a reallocation from his road oil budget for those repairs and capital outlay. The fourth and final is number twenty-one. This impacts each precinct, uh, the amendment amount for each precinct is forty-three thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars, a total of one hundred seventy-three thousand five hundred thirteen. These are grant revenues that we have got now that we can distribute among the four precincts. Uh, let me reach in the details. This is to set up a referenced grant, which we call it the county transformation infrastructure grant. The total of the grant through TechStop requires a match of nineteen thousand two hundred seventy-nine dollars, which will be met using the labor of the road crew or other road materials within each precinct. This grant has several requirements, including project resources, use of funds, reimbursement responsibilities, inspection, environmental certifications, et cetera. Commissioner Fitch will be responsible for obtaining grant county. And a copy of that, a copy of that executed grant here is attached. I think this comes from, uh, Kim Garner at, at Atlanta TechStop. So, that's good news, beginning some grant funds to be able to use for road improvements. So, there are your four amendments. Any questions? Want to review any of these for you?
Judge Lee, could we go back to number eighteen? The first one we talked about? There's some information down there at the bottom that you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. I missed that. This was the thirty-three hundred fifty dollars that we approved to rework our courthouse annex bathrooms with an offsetting decrease to the funds that we had budgeted for our, whatever we're called in the work we're eventually going to do to that annex. We have four hundred thousand dollars in the budget for that annex that was hoped to be used to either purchase properties or to begin some planning for a new, uh, complex over there. We're going to pay thirty-three hundred fifty dollars out of that four hundred thousand dollars. That was, that was at the bottom of that first item, number eighteen.
Make a motion approve.
Motion to approve these four amendments, Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item fifteen, signed pay orders and approve item the bills.
Make a motion for fair bills.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, item sixteen, closing comments, um, COVID related, uh, we still don't, are not getting as many vaccines to the hospital as the hospital would like, as I would like. We are, however, getting more showing up within our pharmacy community. And so, the county did give out three hundred, not the county, with the help of Tech Park Emergency Management, three hundred fifty vaccines were given a week ago Friday, um, up at the civic center. We're hoping to get another large amount like that, uh, hoping that the hospital will get a large amount and they can move over to the civic center as well if necessary. I had spoken with Stephanie Thurman, our friends at Thurman's Chromed Pharmacy, and she reached out to me the other day, I think it's a great idea. She's getting in good numbers of vaccines, in fact, to the point now where she thinks that, uh, the public might be better served if she had a larger facility to administer this with. And I think it would be a win-win, and I told her that I would allow her to do that. We are shooting for, uh, Good Friday or the Saturday before Easter, having a, uh, an event at the Bell Tower parking lot where they could set up their staff and have, uh, drive-through vaccines be available. We haven't finalized logistics over there, but I think doing it on a county holiday, which is that Good Friday or that Saturday, where we wouldn't have cars parked in that lot would allow her to get hopefully a large number of shots given out or vaccines given out that day. So, that's hopefully coming, uh, that weekend of Easter. But the numbers continue to go down. At our last phone call, we only had one person in the hospital at TRMC. That's good, the number of additional new cases is going down. So, so far, things are going in the right direction. Uh, each additional vaccine is given, puts us that much closer to, uh, getting this thing under control. You had a document that, uh, Barbara supplied for you, talking about some FEMA monies, I have to give you some, uh, COVID, what's that word? What is that grant called?
Coronavirus relief.
Coronavirus relief. Do you want to tell us anything about that document?
Absolutely.
Pretty self-explanatory, a very good summary of what some of the decisions we have facing us that are coming up, uh, some substantial monies that will probably be made available to Titus County as well as other counties that sometime in the future will have to decide how we're going to use that money. But, uh, do you think for today specifically that you want to talk about?
Well, since you're in my report, I'll be happy to give the summary of it, if that's what kind of you, Judge.
That, that's fine, again, all of these guys have a copy of that. I just wonder if there's anything additional, but if you have not read that, please do read that. Barbara lays it out real well for you.
Um, I'll summarize this for you right, right quick. The coronavirus relief grant is the initial grant that we got of seven hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. We spent about a hundred and nine thousand dollars of those funds for, um, personal protective equipment when we put up dividers in the clerk's office, the county clerk, the district clerk, those kinds of things, as well as has to be paid for the sheriff's department. And after that, we had money left over of about six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. What we found was as the process moved through TDM and there were funds left over, we learned that if we didn't use those funds, they would take those back and reallocate to other counties. They also, uh, allowed the treasury, Department of Treasury approved something called an administrative accommodation, which allowed us to claim all of the costs for the sheriff's office from March through December. We weren't able to claim all of that because that, those costs were more, but we claimed six hundred and twenty-two thousand. We have received the bulk of those funds, we're waiting on about seventy-two thousand dollars from that. Those are funds that we can use, of course, we'll need to reimburse ourselves for the hundred and nine actual costs that we had. The other funds are monies that we can use as we see fit. But I would strongly caution that we don't make a plan for that until we get the final release from TDM and Treasury, because we certainly don't want to make any plans for those until we know, you know, what the requirements finally are. The new stimulus, this is the one that President Biden just signed, um.
American Rescue Plan.
Yes, that's the name of it. Um, the ARP, which gets me confused with AARP, but in any case, the ARP. Um, the county's allotment, allotment is, um, six point three million dollars. That's sizable money. The city's allotment is about three point six or so, those are round numbers. Uh, the information that I have says that we should receive the first entitlement within approximately sixty days and the remainder of it within one year. Now, because these are so new, normally what happens is they send out the information with broad descriptions and then they give us information on how those things can actually be spent. The options at this time are similar to the first coronavirus grant, respond to or mitigate public health related COVID nineteen, lost revenue to the county due to the closing of county offices, um, such as when the offices closed, uh, for a limited amount of time, but our, our revenue was still down slightly in our district court, our county court, those kinds of things. We can reimburse ourselves for those losses. Um, investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure, or we can pay, uh, county employees. The other thing that's through this that is not part of the six point three million dollars, but it is something that the county would benefit from, is emergency paid sick leave tax credits. We talked about those earlier when we extended officially, the coronavirus grant ended those opportunities at December thirty-first. We voted to extend those through March thirty-first. Those are now extended through December thirty-first and they are allowable for counties. The use of these funds does not have to be completed until December of twenty twenty-four. So, my recommendation is that we are aware that we have these opportunities. We see what other counties are using those for, we evaluate what our needs are and determine what would be the best thing. But we don't have to be in a hurry to spend these funds. And the last item on this list is the FEMA requirements. Um, based on the information that we have for the county proper, only the county, we have the Justice Center that has a ten thousand dollar, um, insurance deductible that we'll have to pay. The damage to our county roads does not meet the requirements. Um, I've completed the DSO, which is the disaster summary outline for Titus County, and I believe it's unlikely that we will have any other funding from FEMA through TDM at this time.
As I told you, I attended a judge's roundtable, Selfish Springs, on, uh, Friday. We were there for about four hours, you know, we, that was the question I posed to these guys is what are you thinking about your county's allotments? And, you know, you think Titus County is large, it's six point three million, why have great county in there? Smith County, and huge sums of money, even smaller counties, uh, you know, than us, get three and four million dollars. Nobody in that room yet was ready to say what they were going to do with it, and they knew what they wanted to do with it. Uh, some had differing ideas, why all the roads or, uh, water and infrastructure like we know that we need. But everybody's going to wait patiently until we see what the actual final regs say you can do with that money and then, uh, we'll probably be gathered again, we will be gathered again in that same group, not just for that purpose, but we need every so often, I think we're going to meet again in May. And then maybe we'll have some better idea, I don't know how quickly it will be before we have a real clear direction from the government as to how we can use those funds. Hopefully, there will be, you know, some wide range of options there for us, but, uh, a lot of money, that's, that's a good thing. I say it's a good thing, it's all that all is here, and it's come from the best government and there may be strengths attached, uh, and they be difficult to accept that money, but we're sure going to try. So, thank you for putting together that memo. I'll start on my end, parchment, comments?
No, sir. We've got to prove Friday for, uh, we can start on construction, on our chip ceiling, on the roads we're going to do for our road grant and the CTIF grant. So, we know that, we're waiting on warmer weather and we keep up those receipts, turn them into me. Each receipt has to have its own paperwork with it and signed off by Judge Lee and we'll send it in and when we get.
So, what about that PO going with me Doug?
It'll be, uh, a PO and it'll come out of that line item in your budget there for road grant on those. And then the final thing will be they inspect it sometime this fall and we'll have it complete. So, that was encouraging. That's it.
Have company remember to put this glass back.
Okay.
Before we get out of here.
Uh, this is on a side that, uh, I want to send out condolences and prayers to the Stacks family. And, uh, just keep them in your prayers, that's all I ask. Jimmy Stacks.
Jimmy Stacks.
The guy that he, uh, used to do the, uh, he used to work on lawnmowers over by CVS. Yeah, he's, my cousin said, uh, that's his dad, so. I'm remembering in your prayers.
I don't have anything.
All right. All right, thank you for your time today. I think that round is up, all in favor of motion to the governor.
Make that motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.